Councilmember Pulipati.
Here.
Councilmember Sander.
Here.
Councilmember Budge.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Here.
Mayor Gaywood.
Here. Stacy, can you please read the playback schedule?
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated, and AT&amp;T U-verse cable systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, March 18th at 9:00 a.m. and Sunday, March 21st at 9:00 a.m. This meeting can also be viewed on Metro Cable's 14 YouTube channel. A DVD copy is also available from checkout from any library branch. A copy can also be ordered from the city clerk's department, and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Great, thank you. Um, Linda, can you do the pledge of allegiance?
I would be happy to, Garrett. Since I have a flag. Please join me. Right, hold it still. Salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Right, and it looks like we have... Oh, Elizabeth Brick from the United Methodist Church of Invocation. Hey, Elizabeth.
Hey, thank you so much for this wonderful invitation. As we center ourselves, let's take a deep breath in together. Let us hail glorious and gracious God on this day of days. We are thankful for your presence and for the gifts of meaningful work. Tonight, we ask your blessing upon the agenda of our city council. We ask you to bless each council person, their service, their hearts, all that they bring to this process. As we who are gathered, wait and listen and learn, we ask that you will open our ears and our minds. May we speak when we do with clarity and kindness, and may we find ourselves full of new possibilities and new hope. Bless this work, may it be fruitful for the common good of the city of Rancho Cordova, and may we all be good stewards of our community and the land and all who dwell herein. Thank you for your love, oh God, your inspiration and your wisdom. We lift this prayer in your many and powerful name. Amen.
Amen. All right, let's move on. We're gonna start off with presentations. So I have a proclamation to the Rancho Cordova Whiskers Warriors Recognition Volunteer Support Program. So I'm gonna show the awesome proclamation. Do we have any from Whisker Warriors here?
We do, we have Tara Colvin-Brock.
There's Tara.
And I'm bringing her over right now. If she wants to.
Hi Tara.
Hi, I'm here.
All right, awesome, okay. In recognition of Rancho Cordova Whisker Warriors, March 15th, 2021, the city of Rancho Cordova is proud to be a partner with the sponsor of Whisker Warrior Animals Defense Fund, commonly referred to as Rancho Cordova Whiskers Warriors. Rancho Cordova Whisker Warriors goes beyond for these animals. In addition to facilitating spay neutering, vaccinations, procedures, as well as microchipping flea prevention, they have organized adoptions at feed and pet stores in Rancho Cordova. They have had a presence of multiple Rancho Cordova events, including Kids' Day in the Park, Memorial Day, Moonlight Series, to distribute free pet food and provide information to Rancho Cordova residents. Now where, now where it be resolved, the city of Rancho Cordova does hereby recognize the volunteer of Rancho Cordova Whisker Warrior and the hundreds and hundreds of hours of volunteer time they do a year, including trapping, feeding, fostering. Where in witness of, I have set my hand and caused the seal to the Rancho Cordova City and fixed it on March 15th, 2021, which is my third proclamation. Awesome Tara. It's not a lot this year, it's not a lot of proclamation. I also want to just point out how amazing they are. When the Veterans Center was getting started and the vets needed partners, Whisker Warriors happened to be one of the few organizations that stepped up, volunteered, not only brought food, toys, and animals to these vets that had just come off the streets that needed this. She has been a stalwart piece of the community, and I couldn't imagine running the city without having...
Lost Garrett.
Lost you.
Come back Garrett.
All right, try that one more time. And they are an amazing organization, and I couldn't imagine Rancho Cordova without them. It's very dark and kind of spooky. Working on my IT every day, just every day, nineteen minutes. It's just awesome. So Tara, this proclamation is for you. And if you could bring her up, would you like to say anything?
Well, sure, thank you so much. We are all, my whole team is very grateful for the support of animal services, Cyrus, and of course, all the members of the city council. We couldn't do our work without you. So I'm very grateful for this support. I firmly believe that animal care and support in Rancho Cordova is the best in the region because of our partnership. So thank you.
You're here.
I hear you, yay. All right. Public comment. Citizens wishing to address the council for any matter not on the agenda may do so at this time via teleconference using Zoom. If you want to make a public comment, please use the raise your hand feature at the bottom center of your screen. If you're participating by telephone and you want to make a public comment, please press star nine to raise your hand. For those participating by Zoom or telephone, please wait for Stacy to call upon you. Speakers are encouraged to keep their comments three minutes or less, state the name of the community and the residence. Under provision of California State Code, the city council is prohibited from discussing or taking immediate action on any item on the agenda unless it is demonstrated to be of emergency nature or the need to take immediate action arose after posting of the agenda. Stacy, do we have any public comment?
The city clerk's office has not received any public comment via email for items not on the agenda. We do have one hand that is currently being raised via telephone, and I'm going to take a moment to move them over so that they can speak. So to the caller whose telephone number starts with 916-205, you'll have three minutes, and if you could introduce yourself, that would be great, thank you.
Hi, my name is Helen Willen-Bachal. I live on Sierra Grande Circle. I have several things. First off, today I went to my mechanic's, which is Danny's, and I found out that their PPEs, which is protective personal equipment, their gloves, the nitrate gloves that they wear so they don't get the fluids in contact with them, have gone from, prior to this COVID, eight dollars for a box of a hundred to more than forty-four to sixty-six dollars a box right now. That does not seem real reasonable, considering it's something that all the mechanics need. I don't understand why the prices have gone skyrocketed. And to get size medium, he has to pay upwards to a thousand dollars for a case of a thousand gloves. That's just unrealistic this time. A second item I'd like to talk about is Rod Bowdre. This weekend, we had a high-speed chase out of the park. The Rangers had their sirens going, and somebody was driving full speed out. A few of the people who were walking their dogs at the time felt endangered. Had we had a speed bump, that car would have had to slow down or screwed up its undercarriage. Once again, I'm asking for a consideration of one speed bump right after, between the gate and the East Tiffany area, because we've got to slow this traffic down, it's crazy. My other item is, last meeting, I made a comment about the lack of participation in black heritage. If anybody goes back and revisits what I said, the response I got from the mayor is not addressing what I said. Therefore, I have all along, for the last few months, have been talking about cultural diversity and the need to show and to deal with people of color. I feel that had the city done something with the children, at least the children, recognizing children in our community, which all of you support, athletes or children that do volunteer work, that would have been more appropriate than the response I got because the city, absolutely, as far as I'm concerned, did nothing. Election or the transfer of power to our first biracial mayor is not a reason to say you feel devoid of black heritage. That's all I've got to say, thank you, bye.
We have another speaker under public comment. Michelle Jarrow, and I'm gonna go ahead and unmute you as well. Michelle, you'll have three minutes.
Okay, hello, councilpeople. I participated in the housing element sessions as a resident, and it really stood out to me how there were no in-house support services for housing insecure at-risk youth. And these parcels were adjacent to the proposed youth center would be the perfect, you know, space for youth-focused respite center. And I met with the WIND Youth Service Director last week, and she is going to consult with her parent organization to ask if there's a possibility and desire to expand their services to Rancho location. And I would like to work with the city to see if this is something we can get set up for our at-risk youth and our homeless youth, as it has helped with their youth in the following ways. And first and foremost, kids may feel more comfortable away from the adult homeless zoning, and it will allow kids to escape from their abusers, especially during the pandemic. You know, child abuse is raised to percentages that I don't even like to hear since the pandemic's gone on, and they've been trapped at home, you know, not being able to go to school, you know, to get away, even to get away. So, and then we'll provide beds, a place to shower and laundry. Meals will be provided. As far as education, we'll provide a learning space, computers, small library, tutor, bus passes to get our kids to and from school. We would not help, would not only help our at-risk youth, but our homeless children, a lot of people forget about our homeless kids, which we tend to forget about. Ages vary from 12 to 24. We would have an area to help find a job. We would have, we've never had anything like this in Rancho Cordova before, so we're hoping that, you know, all of our surrounding communities would follow suit, you know, once they see the success of this. And also, we would provide counseling for addiction and mental health, whether it's with the children or at home. You know, there's a lot of addiction that comes with the abuse and what have you. So we wanted to get some kind of counseling, you know, for the, for the children that are either coming from addiction or mental health, or they are themselves addicted or have a mental issue. And with this being said, it's my hope that, you know, we'll take into consideration the need for our youth to stop being overlooked, and we believe our youth could benefit tremendously from having an organization such as this. So that's, you know, pretty much the gist of what I have, you know, but something I feel that's pretty important. So, that's all I have.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Garrett, let's thank her for the very detailed letter that she wrote today. That was very nice.
Thank you very much for that well-written letter. Stacy, who's next?
That's all the public comments that we have for items not on the agenda at this time.
Excellent. We'll move on to council reports, and let's go ahead and hear from David Sander.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a few things to report. It looks like our youth sports are on a track to reopen and in the, in the short term. So there has been some social media activity out there, as well as a lot of emails and other contacts made to parents to let them know that Little League, girls softball, and eventually Rancho Cordova soccer are likely to be back, full in force, this somewhat altered and somewhat delayed season. So we're happy about that. It took some negotiation from, with the school district and the park district, and our city staff, Cyrus and Stacy, were very involved in making this happen and getting it to work. I think there still may be a little liability issue with the school district, but I think that one's fixable. But it's, it's a big accomplishment, and it's enormous benefit for our kids. We're gonna get a chance to go back and play after losing basically all their seasons over the past year. So more to come there, but RCA's been on it, city staff have been on it. We had great partnership with the, with the school district and sort of had the park district in an emergency backup role. So good community collaboration. Let's see. We have gotten some interesting feedback from neighborhoods down around Sunrise and Douglas on the importance of Connector segment, mainly that which extends north from Douglas along Grant Line towards White Rock Road and eventually Eldorado Hills. That segment, which is unimproved and has some tight turns on it and no shoulders, we've gotten some, actually probably about a hundred, I think, citizens emailing or writing or calling, asking for that segment to be prioritized. And I wanna, wanna thank some local residents there who have sort of done the extra legwork. They approached Siri, Councilwoman Pulipati and I about it, and I gave them some good background on the JPA upon which I serve. I think I'm vice chair this year. As well as CACOG and our funding strategy, as well as Congressman Ami Barra and his potential role in helping us fund a segment of the, of the connector that would address those concerns. So Councilwoman Pulipati and I are gonna continue to work on that front and try to garner more public support for grants and expenditures that would make that improvement of Grant Line Road possible. I think it's really important for the, for the neighbors back there and for the future of the city. I did my vaccine talk, I think it's been two weeks. Is that different from the exact date? At least it's been two weeks since I did my follow-up to the original coronavirus talk that I did, wearing my virologist hat. Had a very good feedback on the vaccine talk, a lot of emails on the side, a number of people who were present there, and it's also been, I think, made available since on, on YouTube. So I'm happy to do that. A lot of vaccine hesitancy, we're finding out through CDC work, is because credible people in their community are not advocating it, they're only hearing it from strangers. And so to the extent that all of us are credible, you know, in our community, I would encourage you all to talk positively about the role vaccines can play in opening up things like youth sports in our future, as well as getting back to whatever our new normal's going to be. And if you have technical issues, of course, feel free to, to call on me or our health authorities to help with that. But I think all of us have a role to play in normalizing and helping people feel comfortable about what's going on with, with vaccines. The National League of Cities had our annual, normally do the DC meeting last week. I wouldn't say it was a normal meeting by any sense, but we had some great representation from the new administration, in particular, from Secretary Pete. So our, our Transportation Secretary, he's no longer known as Mayor Pete, now he's Secretary Pete by his own choice, actually came to the National League of Cities Board Meeting and participated in that session with the board. So it was a great opportunity for him to hear up close and personal, as we could be through Zoom, about projects that matter to cities all over the country. And we did a really nice job with that. Also, of course, last week, the American Rescue, uh-oh, is it American Rescue Act, American Rescue Plan, I can't remember? I think it's ACT. Probably the largest appropriation of federal funds to local jurisdictions ever occurred last week with no, certainly with a lot of support, and probably we can attribute the success of that action to the National League of Cities. Now, we in Rancho Cordova find ourselves in an unusual situation. I think the numbers that we're talking about here could be fifteen or sixteen million dollars devoted to Rancho Cordova rescue. The challenge, of course, is that we may not have had that level of loss in, in these two years. Cyrus and staff will have to work on it. There are some other opportunities. You can spend those dollars on infrastructure and in partnership. Cyrus, you may have more detail of this in your report. I'm just gonna defer to that if you, if you do. And I think that is my report for now. Thank you.
All right, thank you, David. Linda.
Yes. To support his call for support for vaccination. I realize everybody is different, but on the other hand, my husband and I have both had two shots. We got them at Safeway, it was a simple process. We walked out of the first shot with our appointment for the second shot, so there was no question that it was gonna happen. It was absolutely, and I am not a person who likes getting shots, it was the absolute least painful shot I have ever gotten in my entire life. And I've had some heavy-duty ones, like typhus and tetanus and typhoid to go overseas, but this was so simple. And personally, no, actually for neither one of us, no after-effects. And frankly, the feeling of relief is really, really comforting. So you're absolutely right, David, we all need to go and support this. I would like to do two things. I would like to congratulate the Chamber of Commerce on having finally accomplished their long-held goal of doing a coloring book for Rancho Cordova kids. This coloring book was part of what Explore Rancho Cordova will be giving to families when they take their kind of welcome wagon basket out to families or distribute it to families. And it looks really nice. It was done with the participation of some of our artists. And the presentation is very, very good, very professional. And I want to congratulate them. And then finally, I'm not sure if everybody got this, but SAC State has something special happening tomorrow morning, and this box came in the mail, the City Hall. And it has a whole bunch of SAC State giveaways. The campaign is called "On the Rise." Even the dog is aware that there's jelly beans. A variety of things. And chocolate, that's probably what the dog is smelling. At any rate, tomorrow morning at... Well, it says 11:00 a.m. Pacific Standard Time, but since we're no longer on Pacific Standard Time, I'm not sure whether it's 10 or 11, but they are doing a virtual celebration to kick off what, what they're calling a transformational impact at SAC State. And I'm sure we'll hear all about that later, later in the week as time goes on. And that's my report, Garrett.
Excellent, thank you, Linda. Donald.
Thanks. Keep it kind of brief. I think my day job the last few weeks has been keeping me from more council activity, but we did have a two-by-two, and we're starting up the, the two-by-twos with the school districts again for the year. But we had SAC City last week. They're probably the furthest from a clear plan of action as far as getting back into classrooms and what that's gonna look like. Although, the, the disturbing trend that we're seeing, and I just wanna kind of share with everybody, is there's been this clamoring about reopening schools, and I know Falls Cordova is, I believe, still... Well, there may be some that opened this week, but as far as I know, they were really the only ones in the county that had gotten it together to, to do a hybrid model. But it's sounding like about 40% of students and families are actually willing to send their children back at this point. I think there's a lot of factors that we're hearing as part of this, but I'm just kind of sharing it with the community that has... There's, there's been this call from what, what clearly is a vocal minority in the community about reopening schools and getting kids back on campuses, that it's, it's seemingly that a majority of families are not going to send their children back yet. That could be because of the model and the fact that they've got to figure out daycare and pick up and drop off, and it's only a couple of days a week. But right now, it's looking like in all of our districts, the majority of families are not interested in sending their kids back to school. So that's something to really keep in mind as, as we think about this subject and the sensitivity around it, and the fact that there are parents out there that are really clamoring to do this and other ones that really are not. And so we've seen that in SAC City, and we're hearing really the same thing in El Crow, and I think it's playing out very similarly in Falls Cordova. In my first STA meeting, there wasn't much to talk about. It sounds like next month will be a showdown of sorts around priorities and funding levels for a handful of projects, including our White Rock Road project. But not much to report there in the short term. We had our county two-by-two with the new county executive or interim county executive. I think it was a fairly productive conversation. There was talk about having Dr. Cassiri maybe come and address the council in the not-too-distant future and give an update as far as vaccines and testing and protocols and reopening and all that stuff that was going on. But, I mean, to call the situation around COVID fluid is probably an understatement. I would say ten days ago, we, you know, we weren't going to move into the red tier, or we had moved into the red tier, the county was disappointed, and, you know, vaccines are rolling out, and we're now there and talking about, you know, another tier change in the not-too-distant future again. And so things are continuously changing, it seems like, the county health perspective. I think beyond that, I'll leave it to Garrett if he had any other thoughts when it came to SAC City Unified or the county. But those were kind of my takeaways from, from the meetings I had.
All right, thank you, Donald. All right, Donald and I had our vice mayor-mayor meeting. That was good. We had, I, I did my first, I guess, speech with a talking points from the Delta Sigma Theta sorority. I want to thank them for that, for the good, the bad, and the ugly. They got to hear about us, and we had one of our officers showed up, and we had people from the homeless outreach group showed up, and so that was a great feelers out for them. They asked what the community could do, and I said, "Put your business in Rancho Cordova, 'cause we care about our community." And I kind of just went through all the amazing stuff that Rancho has, including the first community outreach policing. Plus, we're getting ready to do some stuff that's gonna be on top of that. I gave blood, so you guys might see some tilly pictures with me with a green hat on. I apologize for that picture in advance, but I gave about three pints of blood or wherever it is. Very excited about the youth sports, Little League. My son got to have his first practice, and he was super excited. We had the two-by-two with SAC City. Everyone just needs to be patient when it comes to schooling. Donald and I are on the same wavelength. It's gonna be a slow, slow path to them even starting backup again. And even Rancho's only going two days, and some people only going like a couple of hours a day, so don't expect anything to happen until probably next year of more normalcy. SAC County's two-by-two was great to hear everybody and what they're trying to do to get more stuff tilted up for us on the way when it comes to COVID and vaccination areas. And so I'm just glad to hear that more and more people that I know are starting to get vaccinated. And yeah, just happy to be the first. And yeah, just happy to be the first African American or black mayor of Rancho Cordova. And at that point, I'm going to go ahead and let the city manager go for his report.
Mr. Mayor, before I go, I think Councilmember Pulipati is also on.
Is she back?
Yes.
Hey, Siri, go ahead.
From my end, well, we just came out, had the International Woman's Day earlier this month. And I'd like to wish all the lovely women on this call and in my city of Rancho Cordova, a very happy Woman's Day. That said, I haven't had any two by twos. We're going to have some this week. I'll have more updates then. And I attended the National League of Cities Online Virtual Two Days Conference. Learned a lot about how other cities are doing and, you know, more about how the COVID vaccine and how they're implementing that. We talked about the Southeast Corridor. I think there's steps that we could do on that with the residents and going to work on some few steps. And having David give me some more understanding and education on how to proceed with that one.
Great, thank you, Siri. All right, Cyrus, you're up.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to add to what Councilmember Sanders said about the American Rescue. It's actually American Rescue Plan Act. So it has both plan and act in it. It is, you know, obviously you've heard and read in the news that the plan has been approved and signed by the president. And it would provide funding based on CDBG formula to all the cities and the counties. And based on what we know, this allocation of the funds would be over the course of the next two fiscal years. We don't have any details yet at this point. We don't know if they will come with any restrictions or will come with any requirements yet. But we think that part of this could be used for lost revenue. So more to come on that. That's the information that we have so far. But we know that the allocation would be spread over a two-year timeline.
I think there are some restrictions. There has to be revenue replacement or COVID related emergency spending that was done or anything extra that was done for that. And then they do allow some infrastructure spending of those funds, but I think it's limited to water, telecommunications, sewer perhaps.
Yes, yeah, I think a great emphasis, a lot of emphasis on those infrastructure facilities and also Wi-Fi and internet connectivity. I think that is an area of interest that the federal government is interested.
We're going to do five G for the entire community of Rancho Cordova. Is that what you're saying? They just invested in five G for the entire city? That's amazing, free Wi-Fi for all Rancho. I'd like to hear that.
It was, I mean, it's a remarkable act. There's never been, you know, any kind of direct payments to cities on that order before. If you add up transportation spending, obviously it outpaces that, but not in a given year. It's sort of close to what spending might be in a given year on behalf of cities by the federal government. So there was some controversy as well, obviously, you know, with some board members of NLC, for example, saying, you know, is it worth this to basically, you know, borrow this money or spend this money that our grandchildren will be paying back? It's an interesting, interesting question about debt load. And how much rescue is necessary. But it's done and here we are.
But broadband, I think just broadband is definitely one of those line items that has been mentioned in the bill. I was also able to have a very good productive conversation with Derek Minima, who is the Executive Director of the Southeast Connector. We did talk about the portion in Rancho Cordova. And he has also been in conversation, communication with our Public Port Director, Albert Stricker. The plan is that they would like to submit a funding grant, a funding application for the infra grant. This is a federal program that provides funding for large scale infrastructure projects. And we have, we were planning on supporting them on this application and hopefully being able to get the support of the region to make it a successful application. So that would, at the end, if we're able to at least get the, the environmental work is completed on the section within Rancho Cordova and the section, the connector within Rancho Cordova. And hopefully this will provide additional funding for the engineering part of it before we get into the construction funding. So that's the tentative plan. The other thing I wanted to mention, last Thursday, I was able to participate in the Sacramento Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce Annual Meeting. First meeting that was held remotely. And it was, of course, it has a very different feel and flavor to it once you participate when you hold those meetings remotely. But it is remarkable to see how successful this Asian Pacific Chamber of Commerce has been in the way of the work that they have done to brand themselves as a regional, a big regional player. So I was very pleased to be part of that presentation. And that's all I have as to me at this point.
Excellent, thank you. So we're going to go to consent calendar items. Consent calendar items consist of matters deemed routine or non controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for an individual consideration, all items may be approved by one motion. Ask the council, do they want to pull any items?
There are none. I will move items sixteen point one through sixteen point ten.
Second.
My second. Okay, Donald.
Donald was first. So fast.
I know, he's like, wow.
I would just like to mention that we, I would just like to mention that the City Clerk's Office did receive some public comment with regards to these items. And specifically, Michelle Jarrow wrote with regards to item sixteen point eight. Donald Childs wrote an email with regards to item sixteen point ten. And FISA Mogul sent in an email with regards to sixteen point ten as well.
Excellent. Roll call.
Thank you. Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Councilmember Sanders.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right, consent public hearing items. So consent public hearing items consists of matters deemed routine and non controversial by staff. Unless a member of the council wishes to pull an item for individual consideration, all items may be approved by one motion. I'm going to go ahead and open the public hearing and ask the clerk if there's any public comment.
The City Clerk's Office has not received any public comment with regards to these two items.
I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if the council wishes to pull any items.
Move approval of seventeen point one and seventeen point two.
Thank you, Linda.
My second.
Hooray.
Second, Siri, nice job, Siri, way to get in there. Roll call.
Councilmember Sanders.
Aye.
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood.
Aye.
Excellent. All right, public hearing items. Stacy, can you announce eighteen point one, please?
An ordinance amending Title twenty-three, zoning code, Article Three, zoning districts allowable uses and general development standards, Article Nine, special use provisions, and Article Eleven, definitions of the City of Rancho Cordova Municipal Code in regard to emergency shelters.
All right, Darcy and Stefan, staff report, please.
Give me just a moment to move them over. Stefan and Darcy should join us, be joining us now.
Good evening.
Hi, Stefan.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Darcy Galart with the Planning Department. Next slide, please. Well, they're switching to the next slide. Before you this evening is some amendments to Title twenty-three in relation to our emergency shelters. I'm going to do just a quick intro and then Stefan's going to go ahead and handle the majority of the presentation this evening. Next slide.
Thanks, Darcy. Yep, so Stefan Heisler, Housing Manager for the City of Rancho Cordova. So just a quick background on this item. We brought this item originally to you on December ten for discussion and direction on selecting a, at least one zone for a rezone to allow emergency shelters to be a permitted use per requirements to state law. So on December ten, we did receive direction from you to rezone the M one zone and then also hold an additional community meeting. And so we met with the community on February four via Zoom and had a nice discussion about this topic as well as housing element update questions. Really good discussion. So just really important to note for the, mainly for the community, I think, this action is not creating an emergency shelter and there are no current plans to fund or build an emergency shelter in Rancho Cordova. This is just purely the rezone. Next slide, please. So the amendments that are happening this evening for the first reading tonight, there is a change to a table to change emergency shelters from a conditional use permit, CUP, to permitted in the M one zone. And then secondly, to add a short but new chapter to address emergency shelters, which includes the development and operational standards that we are allowed by state law. And then also including a definition of emergency shelters in our land use definition section. Next slide. So again, just a reminder, here's the map of the M one zones in the city. We had talked about the OIMU and the M two zones in December. And we decided to select the M one zone. So in blue there in the map is the areas that would allow emergency shelters as a permitted use. Next slide, please. So here are the proposed standards for Rancho Cordova. These are consistent with other jurisdictions within Sacramento County. We took the survey of the other jurisdictions. And then also, these are the ones that are allowed by state law. So unfortunately, we can't really go to standards beyond these. I know there was an interest by the city council expressed to look at proximity to transit and transit stations. We did find that in other jurisdictions in Sacramento County. However, it, in our opinion, is not allowed by state law. But we did analyze the existing transit stops in relation to the M one zone. And about, I'd say, over fifty percent, close to seventy-five percent of the M one zone is within a half a mile to a transit station. So most of the areas are already pretty close. There would be some areas around the edges along the canal that would be a little bit further than half a mile, but nothing, you know, too terribly onerous. So you can see here the standards that are allowed by state law in addition to whatever standards you have for single family zoning or single family housing within the M one zone, which we don't because it's an industrial zone. So the maximum number of beds, we propose the limit at seventy-five unless there's an emergency or authorized by council. For location of waiting and intake areas, there would need to be space inside. So prospective residents do not have to wait outside on the sidewalk or in the public right of way. The provision of onsite management would require support staff at all times during the shelter's use and as well as having a manager's area located near the entry to the facility. And then proximity to other shelters, we are proposing three hundred feet, which is the maximum allowed by state law. And also pretty consistent with other jurisdictions. Length of stay, one hundred and eighty days per client family. Again, that's the maximum limit and consistent with most other jurisdictions. Lighting would be consistent with the California Building and Fire Codes. And then security would also, of course, have to be provided onsite during hours of operation. And next slide. So staff recommendation for you this evening is to find this project exempt from CEQA and introduce and waive the first reading of the ordinance. And we're happy to take any questions as well. Next slide.
All right, I'm going to open it for public hearing. And do we have any speaker cards? Oh, I'm sorry, that's silly. Do we have any Zoom people or hand raised, star nine?
The City Clerk's Office did not receive any emails on this item and I do not see any hands raised in Zoom or telephone.
Excellent. Council, do you guys have anything you'd like to say?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
For Stefan. Stefan, does it, does the state allow, allowed us to address, I don't want to call it wandering, but coming and going from the emergency shelter, the way, the way the, like the program with the lease of the hotel did?
So unfortunately, they are pretty specific in the statute about which standards jurisdictions can create in addition to standards that we already hold residential uses to in that same zone. I think that the location of the waiting and intake areas is probably the closest that they get to that. They really don't have anything kind of affecting beyond the borders of the sites that they would allow us to enforce.
Okay, well, that's all right because the other thing, especially if you look at the, if you look at your map, the majority of the M one zoning is not only adjacent to light rail and to the cordovan or no, maybe not the cordovan, but to light rail, but it's also of food. You know, I mean, granted, it's fast food, it still is food. So that's a good thing. It's just another supportive reason that the M one zoning is in a cluster that really works.
I mean, the general operations of a facility like this are usually to sleep there. So to require them to stay where it's a hotel where they've literally been given housing is there all day and night. In the shelter, you know, you would check in in the evening or afternoon and be expected to leave in the morning, which is one of the issues that you have down on Richards Boulevard and other areas of Sacramento where these types of facilities have been cited. But the traditional way, even our Rancho Cordova Heart program that operates most years, it's an intake in the evening or afternoon and with an expectation that they're going to leave to go to work or to go somewhere else. So the loitering or leaving the facility is not something that probably could be addressed with what this is being zoned for.
And that's fine. At regional transit, there's been a whole, there's been an enormous amount of discussion about the railroad avenue location. But unlike Heart, an emergency shelter probably is not providing an evening meal. They're just providing a bed. And so they're going to need to be around in the neighborhood to find food. So that was, that was my question. That was a totality of my question.
Thank you. Any other comments, council? Great, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
We introduce and waive the first reading of this ordinance.
Thank you, Linda. And then Donald hit us with the second. Can I get a roll call?
Councilmember Budge.
Yes.
Councilmember Sanders.
Aye.
Councilmember Pulipati.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry.
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Stacy, can you announce the subject of our next item?
The next item is public meeting to renew the Rancho Cordova Tourism Business Improvement District.
All right. And I have Amanda. There she is. She'll be giving us the staff report.
Good evening.
Oh, wait, hold on one second before I forget. There's two people that have birthdays and I will bring it up. And it, Darcy and Amanda are both birthdays. They're both turned 22 today. And so I think it only, it only begs the question that we have to sing before we can go ahead and move forward. So I'm going to need everyone to-
No, no, it's okay. You don't, you don't have to.
It's too bad. Too bad I've already started. I look for any reason to sing. So we're going to do it on three. One, Donald, unmute your phone. You have to help. Two, three. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Mr. Darcy. Happy birthday to you. Right, now we're cooking. All right, now we're with staff report. All right, staff report.
Well, thank you very much for that. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm Amanda Norton, the Economic Development Manager. And as you may recall, on March 1st, the council heard a presentation and approved a resolution of intention to renew the Rancho Cordova Tourism Business Improvement District, also known as a T-Bid. The next step in the process is to renew the district is to hold a public meeting and receive public testimony on the renewal of the T-Bid. So tonight, we are asking council to open a public hearing, allow for public testimony, and then close the hearing. No other action is needed this evening. And then after tonight's meeting, there will be another public hearing that will occur on the Tourism Business Improvement District next month. It will go before you. So again, tonight's action is to open the public hearing and receive testimony.
Thank you, Amanda. All right, I'm going to go ahead and open public hearing and ask if there are any speaker cards.
There are no public comments for this item.
All right. Council, do you have any comments? Excellent. I'm going to go ahead and close public hearing. Need to ask for a motion? Or is it continuing?
It will come back to you next month for consideration and inaction, but this is just to receive public testimony.
All right, well, thank you, Mark and Mrs. Carson, or Mrs. Lambeth for your time. Is that a giant cow behind you? I just-
It looks like it. It's, it's a picture, yeah, it's a painting.
Okay, I was just wondering. It looks like a giant cow. I just didn't want to, we're all seeing it, just wondering what happened.
You're right.
All right, well, thank you for your guys' time. We're going to move on to regular calendar items and this is one of, Donald, my favorite are Rancho Cordova Police Department 2021 First Quarter Council Update. So I'm going to wait for you to get everyone in and out of the, the, oh, there she is. There's my police chief. Right.
Can you guys hear me now?
We hear you.
Very good, very good. Well, good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, city manager staff, and of course, any community, community members, excuse me, that are attending. I appreciate the opportunity to provide a first quarter report on your police services. And while statistics and hard numbers are important, and I certainly want to report on that in the future, so is providing a holistic overview of ways your police department is proactively researching innovative tools and strategies to better serve our communities. Next slide, please. Neighborhood engagement has been greatly affected by the pandemic. Nobody's surprised by that at all, but it has definitely limited our ability to meet in person. Recognizing we needed to find new ways to connect, from March through June, we sent weekly updates and continued with direct phone and email conversations. When COVID revealed it was going to be sticking around for a while, we added online Zoom meetings as well. These online meetings will continue through the end of March and while they're not in person, at least we can all see each other similar to this format and discuss issues in real time. I also added the food truck events in front of the police department where community members could keep a safe distance, remain outside, and talk in person to their pop officer or crime prevention specialists. And I'm excited to announce that a crime prevention specialist has been working with the county health officer and recently received approval to hold in-person neighborhood watch meetings again. These in-person meetings will begin in April and will still have safety modifications in place, but it's great to be moving in the right direction. Next slide, please. The next slide is a video to introduce RCPD's Unmanned Aerial Systems Program. So it should go to a video for you guys.
I don't know-
Should be an arrow to start.
We don't think, this is Stacy Lightner, the city clerk. The video is not working in the council chambers.
Okay. Bummer. As I think it would, as we know, videos speak a thousand words, but no worries. Next slide then, please. So the unmanned aerial system supports the availability of the best public services in the region while freeing up officers to support the needs of the community. As I'd hoped the video would depict, we commonly use the UAS system for search warrants, barricaded subjects, burglary alarms, missing persons, and recently used them to produce 3D imaging of large areas of concern. And as you can see from the slide, from January 1 through February 14th, so basically a little, about 13-month period, we've used the UAS in 59 calls for service in the city of Rancho Cordova. Next slide, please. I'm very excited to introduce the newest program to support our community, the Mobile Crisis Support Team. As part of, as part of our pledge to provide a safe and inviting community, RCPD has partnered with the County of Sacramento Mobile Crisis Unit. RCPD's team will be Officer Cory Jackson and Licensed Senior Mental Health Counselor Caitlin Fournier. The sheriff's office already employs MCST teams and now RCPD will have a dedicated team of their own. Next slide. A little more on the Mobile Crisis Support Team. They serve individuals of all ages by providing immediate response to emergency calls for crisis assessment and intervention to individuals experiencing a mental health crisis. Their goals are to provide a safe, compassionate, and effective response to individuals with mental illness. Increase public safety, they decrease unnecessary hospitalization, they decrease the incarceration rates, provide real-time information, on and access to resources, and link individuals to ongoing care. How will RCPD's MCST team help? Well, a licensed counselor and RCPD officer will partner to provide a first response to emergency calls involving mental health crisis. This allows the fast deployment of skills and expertise from both peace officers and behavioral health to increase diversion of individuals from incarceration or hospitalization whenever possible. MCST peer specialists provide follow-up, engagement, and navigation to ongoing mental health services. In the past year, the county's MCST teams responded to 50 calls for service within the city of Rancho Cordova. So the need for our own team is great. We anticipate our team hitting the field in April of this year. And so that's the end of my first quarter report. And again, while it's critical to discuss the crime trends and data, I believe it's equally important to highlight innovative programs and tools that we're using to hopefully better serve the community.
That's awesome. Hey, I have a question on the drone. Can you give us an example of a crime that you caught using the drone? I saw there were 50 cases.
Yeah, absolutely. So one was recently, it was at a local hotel and it actually ties into the Mobile Crisis Support Team as well. There was a gentleman who was experiencing a mental health crisis. He was armed, he had armed themselves with several knives. Cyrus, the city manager, was kind enough to open up the American River Room for us to use. It went tactical. But most importantly, and sometimes in those events, when somebody's dealing with a mental health crisis, as well as they're armed, they've armed themselves, barricaded themselves, what's happened in the past years ago is it's force on force. And oftentimes, those don't end well for either side, for law enforcement or the individual experiencing the crisis. So to your question, we were able to use the drone, SCD, the SWAT team was able to break out the window so that they could see, it was a second-story window and room. So the drone was able to go up. We actually had two drones up. As one would come down to recharge, the other one would go up and it gave us real-time visual of the person who was there. We were even able to watch him while he was on the telephone getting help. And so the drone, that's one example. Another example, not on crime, is missing persons. When, particularly those who are most at risk, elderly or a child, if they go missing, if these drones go up, they can cover a lot of ground that officers simply cannot. And this is certainly not to replace the helicopter or officers out doing the work, but it really covers a lot of ground. That drone has a very, very broad vantage point.
Absolutely. I love how you have both technology and, you know, taking into account the mental health for, as far as citizens. It's just amazing work and the progress is just really nice. Thank you so much.
All right. Let's, do we have any comments? Before we get into, want to say, do we have any public comment, Stacy?
The city clerk's office did receive one public comment with regards to this item. It was from Donald Childs and it was emailed to the council and it will be available on the city's website also.
Awesome. All right, I know a bunch of us have questions and stuff. So are you, are you going to try to play the video? Because it looks like you about to play it. I'm very excited about that. Ooh, there it goes.
Is there sound?
There's supposed to be.
So I have a speed box.
We're going to try one more thing. The fun times of zooming with video.
Well, if we can't get it up, I can certainly send it to each of you so that you have an opportunity to look at it afterwards.
All right. That's amazing. All right, who else would like to say something on the council? Council comments? Stacy? Linda?
Yeah, I actually, Chief, I want to congratulate you on a traffic, a traffic stop that my husband and I witnessed on Thursday, the 4th, at about 5:18 in the afternoon. One of our wonderful officers shooed a person who was panhandling in the intersection at Zimpandell and White Rock. And she actually arrested him. And there's more to the story, which I am negligent in congratulating you about, but, but I just, I knew that Dan was upstairs smiling because panhandling was such an issue for him and we really appreciate her efforts.
Thank you so much. I appreciate hearing that and the feedback.
Chief, I would just ask about the Mobile Crisis Support Team. I saw, I think, would this say 59 or 50? I forgot which. Calls for service in the, in the presentation. Does that seem like the, the right number? Is that a low number? You anticipate growth here or what? Do you have any other sort of thoughts on, on where that is, numerical?
That's a great question. I think it's actually low. Those are just the ones they responded to and because they're coming from a distance, we're using the county side. So once we have our own and they're more readily available, I see that number increasing.
So you think that 50 was because it was from Sacramento County and if when we do have our own, that number may go up?
I would anticipate it going up. I don't relish in the fact it may go up because that means somebody's experiencing a crisis, but I anticipate it going up because, to your point, yes, when we were calling them for assistance in the past, they're coming from either the north area of the county or in our central division. So they're coming out of district as afraid we would use and they are coming from a longer distance.
The city of Rancho-
Fifty times would be like-
Donald.
Donald.
Fifty times could be like maybe once a week.
A week. I don't know if that would certainly justify having our own team. It's just not, there's not enough, you know, use potentially. But buying into a share of-
Buying into a share of that, you know, use from the county might make, might make more sense, but it just depends on how much, how much use and utility we get from that team. That's the question.
Yeah, and right now, we're just pulling an officer from patrol. There's zero cost to the city. The County of Sacramento, this is funded through them on their side. So there's no cost to the city for this either.
Donald, do you have any comments?
No, I was losing connection there for a minute, so I'm, I'm just listening. Chief, I really appreciate you having someone come first off to the forum we had. That was amazing. Your, your, the, the new stuff that you're bringing to us and making it kind of the testing grounds, especially for the counselor with the policeman and then having our own Robocop is amazing. And, and I just really appreciate you putting us on that list for people to try out all this new type of policing. Community policing model is amazing, added with, you know, our own Robocop and, yeah, I'm going to keep saying the Robocop because I appreciate that. And also having the, the counselor, which I think is so important nowadays to have the extra police of crisis policing. It's just anything we can do because we want to keep this type of edge on the policing models we want to accomplish. So thank you for your report as well and all the hard work you do. And I know Cyrus probably has something he wants to say. Go ahead, Cyrus.
Mr. Mayor, I'm, I'm still hoping that we can play the video if you could. Some work has been put into it. But I also, while you're trying to get that running, I wanted to make a comment that, you know, the word of the year, I believe, with the year of pandemic has been pivot. I mean, we've been able to, and I'm really proud of our, our CPD for being able to adjust and modify and pivot in a new mode of operation. It's been a very difficult year, as you can imagine, and I sincerely appreciate with, you know, the work that they have been able to do, that RCPD has been able to do, the chief and her staff have been able to adjust and modify and respond to our community and the results and the crime reduction speaks for itself, for themselves. So, so thank you for your job well done and I'm really hoping that we can get to see the video because you'll be pleased to, to understand how the new technology has been put to use.
This is Stacy in the city clerk's office. We think we have a solution, so bear with us. We are going to go ahead and-
Are going to go ahead and press start.
The city of Rancho Cordova is a safe and inviting place for everyone thanks to the city's four-pronged proactive policing approach combined with a culture of innovation and a handpicked dedicated and diverse policing team. Technology and data are powerful tools that RCPD uses to enhance this proactive policing approach. Today, we will introduce you to one of RCPD's technology programs, the Unmanned Aerial System. The Sacramento County Sheriff's Office launched its Unmanned Aerial Systems Program in 2019. RCPD launched its program the following year. An unmanned aerial system is a small air- An unmanned aerial system is a small aircraft that is equipped with a camera and operated by officers from the ground. Officers undergo rigorous training and are certified through the Federal Aviation Administration. The Unmanned Aerial Systems assist RCPD in responding to incidents such as barricaded subjects, wanted persons, and certain...
We'll try to the next meeting. Next council.
Um, thank you for your time. I really appreciate as many of these police departments we have because we really want to stay engaged with our, our police force.
I agree, Mr. Mayor. I look forward to doing this as frequently as you'll have me.
All right. Thank you so much. All right.
Bye, everybody. Thank you.
And to everybody back in the room and announce the next subject.
The next subject on the regular calendar is the fiscal year 2020-21 mid-year financial update report and budget amendment.
Great. Is Kim in the room?
I am here.
Excellent. Record, please.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Kim Dran, Kara Georgia, Administrative Services Director. And I'm here this evening to present to you our fiscal year 2021 mid-year financial report and proposed budget amendment. Now, you might recall back in June 2020, we brought forward a budget amendment that put in place some precautionary budget reductions to the City General Fund and Community Enhancement Fund due to the unknown impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on city revenues. My report this evening will provide an update on how COVID has impacted the city and recommend some adjustments to the budget with the information that we now have in hand. Persephone, are you moving the slides? If you can move to the next one?
You should be able to control the screen.
Okay. Thank you. So to jump right into it, we knew at the start that the impact of COVID on city revenues would vary by revenue source in large part due to the timing differences between when certain revenues are calculated and received. What we didn't know yet back in June was how significantly some sectors of the economy were being impacted in comparison to others. The expectation was that the economy would slow more dramatically across the board, which is not exactly what occurred. And I'm going to talk a bit more about the specific revenue streams in a couple of minutes. The areas where city revenues have been most impacted are transient occupancy tax, utility users tax, our commercial waste franchise fees, city hall rental fees, and interest earnings. One area of our economy that has remained extremely strong throughout the pandemic has been the robust construction market in the region, particularly single-family construction, which has positively impacted city revenues. So this next slide is a snapshot of our revenue picture as of the mid-year mark, which shows revenues at 27% of the budget, which is typical for this time of year due to the delay in the receipt of many of the city's major revenues, such as property tax, which we don't receive until January, so after the halfway mark, as well as franchise fees, which are always received later in the year. So at this point, we do expect to see those numbers lag behind, and I will transition into more specific discussion about some of our major revenue sources. Starting with property tax, which is our largest revenue source to the city at 32% of the general fund budget. We did not anticipate that property taxes would be impacted by COVID this fiscal year due to the fact that the assessed value roll had already been completed for this fiscal year when COVID hit. So overall, property taxes are trending slightly above where we estimated they would be when we put the budget together in 2019. So that is positive news for our year-end budget production. And while the current year property taxes are not being impacted by COVID, something that we are watching is the potential for some future impact to this revenue source based on what a post-COVID environment might look like for the city's business park. So that's something that we'll be closely monitoring in the years to come. Sales tax is the next one, our second-largest revenue source. And this is a revenue source that we thought would be significantly impacted by the COVID crisis back in June. So when we came forward with our budget amendment in June 2020, we did reduce the budget for this revenue source down to 14.3 million. What we did not expect is that sales tax for the city would continue to be quite robust as we saw a shift in consumer buying behavior. We saw a lot of tax, a lot of dollars, a lot of income being moved from non-taxable items, such as services and travel, to more taxable goods, which has continued to benefit the city's sales tax stream. In particular, the surge in online purchases has resulted in the sales tax allocation through the county pool, which is where all online sales come through, to increase by 50% this fiscal year. So that is one of the major reasons why the sales tax has continued to perform well. We are also benefiting from the fact that there are many construction-related businesses in the city of Rancho Cordova, and that is an industry that has continued to perform extremely well during these times. So those are two of the major reasons why the city's sales tax revenues have continued to perform well. One word of caution on the horizon is looking forward. We do expect to see, we have been notified that there will be significant changes in the manner in which one of the online retailers, the way their sales tax will be distributed. We don't yet know the impact that this change will have, but we have been told to expect a decrease to our revenues from that retailer for the second half of this fiscal year. So as more information becomes available, we will share that with the council. The next revenue stream is transient occupancy tax. This is the 12% surcharge on room rates in the city's hotels. This has been the revenue source that has been most dramatically impacted by the COVID pandemic. We did include this in our original budget amendment back in June 2020. The original budget for TOT before COVID was 4.25 million, and we were trending last year to beat that budget. When we came in June, we downgraded the budget to 2.75 million. And at this point, for the, looking at the first six months of the fiscal year, we see revenues are about 53% as the same time last fiscal year. So right now, at this current rate, we do not know if, we don't expect the revenues to achieve the current year budget. However, there is uncertainty of whether or not we'll see a pickup in the spring and summer months with the rollout of the vaccine. So we are continuing to closely monitor this revenue source. Utility users tax is typically kind of a steady performer for the city. This, however, has also been impacted by COVID-19 as a result of continuing business closures in the city. Like TOT, we did reduce the budget for this at the beginning of the fiscal year down to 3.3 million. And at this time, we think U T will probably just come in slightly below that budget. On a more positive note, our building, building permit revenue. So as I mentioned earlier, construction activity in the city has continued to occur at an unprecedented rate throughout this COVID pandemic. Last year, we saw an all-time high in our building revenues, and we are continuing on that pace this fiscal year. Based on the original budget, we budget it typically on a three-year average. However, in the past two years since that budget was adopted, we've seen a dramatic increase. So as of February, we have actually already surpassed the current year budget, and we are expecting that we will beat the budget this year by about approximately a million dollars as those revenues continue to come in. However, it should be noted that the high-level construction activity results in higher expenditures to meet the demand for services in this area. So there is a direct correlation between building permit revenues and the expenditure side. Finally, one other revenue source that has been impacted by COVID is investment income. This revenue source, we were on an upward trajectory before COVID with interest rates finally rising after a long period of time at low rates. And then when COVID occurred and the Fed flushed the interest rates to zero, and they've remained extremely low since that time. So this was another budget reduction that we put in place in June of 2020, and we are continuing to see those, those revenues be significantly impacted. And then, as the city manager noted earlier in the evening, the recent passage of the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 will allocate an approximate $15.8 million to the city over the next two fiscal years. As we mentioned, some of this money could be used to offset lost revenues resulting from COVID, as well as some infrastructure investments. So that is, we're still getting more details on that, and we'll come back with more information in the coming months, once we have that information. So switching to the expenditure side, we also reduced the expenditure budget accordingly, as we did with the revenues. And as of December 31st, the six-month mark for the fiscal year, expenditures are at 34% of the general fund budget. At this time, we have no reason to believe that expenditures will not stay within the allocated budget, and that is our expectation. So switching gears from the general fund to the Community Enhancement Fund, this was another area where we preemptively, kind of cautiously, reduced the budget for the current fiscal year back in June of 2020 due to COVID. We were unsure what kind of impact we might see in our sales tax stream. And as I mentioned earlier, when I was discussing sales tax, we have not experienced the reduction in sales tax that we anticipated. So we took the original budget of 8.7 million. We did reduce it down to 7.3 million back in June of 2020. And based on the rate of revenues that are coming in so far, we are recommending, well, we see the estimated actual surpassing 9.5 million. So we are recommending a budget adjustment in this area and asking for some council direction on options for the use of additional Community Enhancement Fund dollars this fiscal year. Some ideas that staff has put forward has been to fund $2 million towards the estimated shortfall for the Rancho Cordova Youth Center. There is a shortfall of approximately 4.5 million for Little League, so this amount could be allocated towards that. And we are interested in hearing if there are any other ideas for the use of the CEF dollars. So I will pause there to see if anyone has any comments.
I mean, if I was prioritizing both, both of those projects, I think the youth center, we completely controlled the destiny of that project. So I would want to, I'd make that the priority first. But whatever remainder, yeah, put it towards Little League if we can. But yeah, considering we're controlling the building and the timeline of it, I'd get the youth center done as soon as possible.
I think both of these, I think both these projects are going to be funded. It's just a question of color of money or something like that.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I think those, those choices are fine.
I agree.
Garrett, you're cutting out. We... No, your audio is terrible. I guess, Linda, anything to add to this? Linda, if you're talking, you're on mute.
I'm not talking. I'm shaking my head. No, I just...
Oh, okay. We can't, we can't see you when it's presented like that, if you're... Yeah. Um, okay, yeah, and I think I would agree with David. I think both of these need to be funded. I just think that if we're prioritizing from a timing perspective, one, we could start very, very soon. The other one, I think there's still things to be worked out. Garrett, are you back with audio, or can you want to pick it up again?
Yeah, I'm good. All right.
Okay. We can hear you now. You're much closer.
All right. Yeah, I was going to say that I, I think both these are great things to fund. I'd probably flip them. But whatever brings me basketball courts soon, this is what matters. Linda, do you have anything you would like to add?
Garrett already said no.
No, Garrett. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Council. I think that gives us the direction we're looking for. And we, for the budget adjustment, we will make the appropriate allocation we've been given to you.
Can I ask a question?
Yes.
Is, when, when will we, when are we going to find out about the money from the feds?
Are we talking about the most recent stimulus? Is that...
Yeah, the 14 million. How are we going to work that? When do we, when do we, you know, is it something that takes six months? Is it something's a quick turnaround? Do we know if we can apply it? How's that look for you guys?
My, I think, based on the information I have right now, I think over the next four to six weeks, we're going to get more information exactly how those funds can be spent and the timing of those. So I would expect probably in the next couple of months, we'll be able to return to the council with more information.
Hey, Cyrus, is this the thing we're making about, with Mommy Bear about?
Yes, I think that's, you wanted to give us a very high-level update. I doubt if Congressman Bear would have any details on the restrictions on the fund or the manner they would be distributed.
Okay. See if we can, if it's okay, can we bring Kim to that meeting, just in case we can get some questions answered? All right. There's no real, is there a roll call or anything, Stacy, or do we need a vote? Kim?
Yes, there is a proposed budget amendment, so there is a resolution. So as outlined on this slide, just to close it up, we are recommending some adjustments to Rand's base, the original general fund budget for this fiscal year, up to 58 million. We are recommending the Community Enhancement Fund budget adjustments that we just discussed, up to 9.5 million. And then there are also some various special revenue and internal service fund adjustments for the city's CIP program that are in that resolution. So that is everything. Thank you.
All right. Before I ask for motion, Cyrus, do you need a hard vote on where we want that money spent, the slide before this? Or are you happy with just hearing from a couple council members? Kim?
I think, I think the direction you gave us is adequate at this point. We have, we probably will put the money, the $2 million, towards the youth center because that's an immediate expenditure. We would be awarding the contract. We would uncover the contract. But we had also discussed in our initial conversations related to Measure R, that some of the funding from Measure R revenues will go to the youth center for the $2 million shortfall. So we can redirect those funds to, to the Little League. But that's a discussion and decision that you don't have to make today. We will, we will cover that discussion and that decision when we have our budget hearing in the month of May.
All right. Can I get a motion?
Move or approve?
Second. Right. Approval and a second. Roll call.
Councilmember Sander?
Aye.
Councilmember Budge?
Yes.
Councilmember Pulipati?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Terry?
Aye.
Mayor Gatewood?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, guys. Thank you for the report. All right. Can I ask the city clerk to read the subject for 19.3?
Discussion on Homeowners' Associations and Enforceable Covenant Conditions and Restrictions.
Thank you. And can you read the...
Elizabeth in there? Elizabeth, there. Great.
I'm here. Okay, so we are returning with a very brief discussion on homeowners' associations and enforceable CCNRs. Next slide, please. So I want to summarize this very brief conversation we had back in February, give you some information on some outreach that's happened since then, and some feedback that I've received from the VIA and some of its members, and then receive final council input and direction. Next slide, please. So very quickly, on February 1st, Darcy had a great presentation where she explained what the traditional HOAs were, so the developments with common areas. State law already requires a formation of an HOA, so we don't have to require it. We talked about non-CID HOAs, which is an option. And it just makes it easier for a non-CID HOA to enforce CCNRs versus individual homeowners trying to do it. And then we spent probably more time talking about enforceable CCNRs, which has kind of been our current... talking about enforceable CCNRs, which has kind of been our current practice, where developers have been recording enforceable CCNRs and naming the city as a third party with rights and without obligation to enforce it. Next slide. So following council direction, I outreach this conversation with the Building Industry Association. So I attended their regular monthly meeting in February and talked to the, right, we talked about HOAs, non-CID HOAs, and followed up with individual conversations. And it was pretty clear that the VIA, as an organization, strongly opposed any kind of an HOA, whether it be a traditional HOA or a non-CID HOA. So then we had a lot of follow-up conversation about enforceable CCNRs. And one of the items, and I will say I brought it up, was the inclusion of an architectural review committee. Of our existing CCNRs, about half of them have this ARC and half of them don't. But again, as an organization, the VIA opposed the idea of us requiring inclusion of an ARC. The other topics we talked about, which they don't oppose, right, is just the enforceable CCNRs in general, and the inclusion and reference to city property maintenance codes in those, they're not opposed, naming the city as a third-party beneficiary, they're not opposed to that. And then including additional provisions to prohibit the parking of boat surveys and trailers, they're not opposed to that either. Next slide. So this is pretty much the last slide, but these are some options I want to present to the council for consideration, right? We could, we could require the formation of a traditional HOA, option one. Option two, we could require the formation of a non-CID HOA. Or option three, require the recordation of enforceable CCNRs. And then I, in here, talked about four things. We could include an ARC or not, and then inclusion of the reference property maintenance code, the city party is the third beneficiary, and prohibit the parking of boat surveys and trailers. So at this point, I want to open it back up to council consideration as to which option you think you want to go. And whichever option we choose, what we would do is come back with a resolution that contains the language for that option, is what we would put in our conditions of approval, or put in a development agreement where we have a development agreement. And I'm also open to answer any questions that you may have.
All right. Thank you. So guys, this is the longstanding question for our group is, are we going to say that any new development going forward is going to require a traditional HOA, so that when someone comes in to develop housing in our community, they know just what is expected when they walk in the door? And Donald, Siri, and I, we're not here for this discussion, but it's time to finally have the discussion and figure out which one has the votes. Donald, is that right?
If I could clarify one part of that, it's not that, it's not that this hasn't come up. I think, and David has said it multiple times, and I think there was a majority of the council that I think was around when they gave staff direction to say that we had, I'm not going to call it a policy, because it was never written down, it was never voted on. But guidance was given to staff at some point by council that one of these versions is something that is expected of new developments. I'm of the opinion that if we, if we have a rule, it should be written down, it should be in a book somewhere, that if somebody wanted to buy land, they knew ahead of time, this is an expectation. And to me, it's never, it's never been asked of me what my opinion is of any of these. So that's where I'm putting this first. And I know at least two council members have an opinion on this, and that's been clearly stated. But the rest of us haven't weighed in on whether or not we want this as a policy.
So Donald, why don't you start us off? What do you think?
Um, I definitely wouldn't want to do option one or two. I'm not necessarily opposed to the third option. But what I want is a clear vote and say, you know, move forward with this. I think the boats and RVs in newer neighborhoods, I don't see a problem with that. I live in a neighborhood that doesn't allow it now, and they have a traditional HOA, and they do their own enforcement. I think as you build in neighborhoods, you can build different expectations than you do with your existing ones. So I'm probably fine with most of that. Yeah, that's kind of my thought process.
Excellent. Let's go with David.
Well, I agree with Donald. I would check all four boxes of option three. You know, the big picture thing here that we've been after is basically what's listed there on option three. We need enforceable CCNRs in new neighborhoods. The whole reason we became a city was that we had, I could basically make this argument, Linda, is that we had no enforceable CCNRs. And so it was kind of the Wild, Wild West, and the county wasn't enforcing anything. Even the law, like state law that exists with regard to properties and their maintenance, the county, to this day, really doesn't enforce in terms of code enforcement. So that's, that's why we became a city, to sort of change course and improve things, stepwise, improve things, make life better in Rancho Cordova, improve property values, clean things up, lower crime, you know, have better schools, all that stuff. You could kind of point to as derivative of this, because left to their own devices, suburbs don't age well. You know, the, the original owners are there, and they're happy, and they maintain what was, what was designed, but over time, they move on. They move on to newer, on average, newer subdivisions or other areas. And people who replace them have slightly less wealth than those who were there to begin with. And so over time, you see suburbs decline. And so having recognized that's what happened to get Rancho Cordova and sort of the mess we were in to begin with when we became a city, it became incumbent upon us to find a way not to repeat that cycle as we grew. Because how dumb would that be to form as a city to fight urban, sort of urban decay, and then in your growth, promote the urban decay? That would be insane. So we came up with this, the only solution we thought we had at the time was HOAs. And we've, over time, figured out, hey, this enforceable CCNR mechanism actually gets us to the place we want to go. Now, if I had my druthers, I would probably want a mix of these. I wouldn't say everybody has to have a traditional HOA, because not everyone wants to live in that environment. But I would certainly encourage it. And I think the unfortunate reality is, you know, the VIA is really opposed, most likely for reasons of concern about future litigation and liability. Because often what happens is these HOAs are used by lawyers to file class action lawsuits against builders based on real or supposed or totally artificial construction liability concerns. And so that has scared the building industry away from sort of putting these HOAs in place, because they just view them as a platform for future litigation against themselves. Why would they do that as a builder? You know, why would you want to set yourself up for that sort of future liability? And I think that's also why we don't have condominiums really anymore in California, because of the liability problems. So I guess we can thank our local trial lawyers for those, those issues and state law. But so, so I would like to see, you know, a mix of traditional and probably non-CID HOAs and other areas that just have these enforceable CCNRs. The problem we have in, in even some newer neighborhoods, and you're gonna see this all over Sacramento County, the unincorporated areas, they'll have CCNRs on a new neighborhood, but it's not enforceable. The only way they're enforceable is this one neighbor chooses to go to court and sue another neighbor, saying you're violating the CCNRs. They would probably eventually win that case, but they might spend several thousand dollars winning that case. And, you know, to get the illegally stored vehicles out of your neighbor's front yard is probably not worth thousands of dollars to very many people. And so as a result, those CCNRs are essentially unenforceable, except we have now found a way through recording those CCNRs with the parcels, putting the city in there with a third-party right to enforce them. If the, if the neighborhood doesn't, or if an HOA does not, that allows us, through our code enforcement mechanism, to maintain the high standards and make those neighborhoods healthier over time. And so I think this is the, this is the solution. I wouldn't outlaw certainly HOAs, I would encourage them. But I would say at a bare minimum, those four options under CCNRs make a lot of sense.
Excellent. Thank you, David. Linda, what do you think?
Well, I would be the first to admit, my thinking has evolved. For 18 years, I lived in a brand-new neighborhood that had CCNRs that we all had to sign quite clearly. And yet, people immediately violated them because they were not enforceable. So my preference would be for option three, that I would eliminate the inclusion of Architectural Review Committee. I now live in a neighborhood with extremely intense CCNRs. And to a certain extent, I'm not appreciating the loss of, or the infringement on private property rights. Somewhere, there has to be a happy medium. And I know that sounds really, really odd, but there's bound to be a happy medium in there somewhere. David is absolutely right. One of the main reasons for incorporating was sort of to clean up Dodge and to elevate people's expectations for their neighborhoods, for the general appearance, for, for the safety and security of the entire neighborhood, and, and for its long-term, for the, for the maintenance of long-term property values. And it seems to me, if we include the bottom three of those categories, we can achieve that long-term property, property values without infringing too strongly on people's personal property rights.
I wouldn't have any problem with that.
That would be my perspective. That would be my perspective. Any other comment?
Mr. May, you're on mute. We cannot hear.
All right, that was, that was terrible. So, okay, let me recap. So we got Donald as a number three, David with a number three, and hopeful number one. Linda is a number three. And then Siri, where are you at?
So, okay, hear me out here. As a homeowner, the key thing that I would look at is safety and security and appearance of the neighboring properties. And we need to find a way to enforce that, right? Even when I was a Realtor, when you'd go to neighborhoods, the first thing you'd look at is how these properties look like from the outside. And then you go safety and security. And I think half of that comes by having an HOA. So I'm actually leaning more to option one and option three. And again, I'm not for Architectural Review Committee, not for that. The parking of boats and recreational vehicles, sometimes, I mean, it depends on the neighborhood. Obviously, since we're talking about newer neighborhoods, they can, people with boats and vehicles will choose to have homes that they can park in their side yard. So I think that's a given for the newer neighborhoods. But, you know, when you go into a new neighborhood, you want to have somebody who you can go to with what the issues are with the neighborhood. And if we have a HOA for all the newer community, that's actually a good thing. And I'm not talking about additional fees, I'm talking about, you know, elected members of the neighborhood, you know, they help maintain ground, the community utilities, work with the overall finances. So I actually like option one.
So I just need to comment. It may not be possible to establish an HOA, as Siri envisioned, without charging a fee. I'm, there may be a traditional, some traditional HOAs that do not hire a management company, but most of them do. And so HOA monthly fees can go, in some of the neighborhoods here in Cat Village, the fee is only $30. In other neighborhoods here in Cat Village, where the, where they do the exterior property maintenance and maintenance on the exterior of the building, the fee is up at $197 a month. And then in places like Gold River, we know that the fees, excuse me, are quite high. So as opposed to just a general neighborhood association, the way they have in Sun River, where contributions are voluntary and quite low, if you didn't have a fee, you would not have any ability to hire a management company.
True.
All right. Thank you, Linda. All right. And for me, I like option one.
Garrett, when you say that, what rights and responsibilities would you assign to a traditional HOA? To add to that, what rights and responsibilities would you assign to a traditional HOA? And actually, this is a question for Garrett and David, that do not, that would not exist in option three bullets B, C, and D?
Through the mirror, could I possibly provide some assistance here as well? I think staff and the city attorney's office might be able to provide a little bit of assistance. Elizabeth, could you possibly take it off of the presentation for just a moment, so we can all see each other? Thank, thank you. So just, just two points, possibly, for the city manager, Elizabeth or Ida, to talk a bit about, just about option one. First, Elizabeth, perhaps clarify the developers' perspectives on option one, but also the requirements for individual projects to have to be able to do option one. Option one doesn't work under many actual circumstances.
Right. So when they're, so for one thing, the VIA is vehemently opposed to a traditional HOA, right? When there's no common property interest that needs to be maintained, I don't think we can really require a traditional HOA. And, and, you know, if there is common property, state law requires that they form one anyway. I don't know, Adam, if you want to take it much further than that.
Can I make a suggestion, Elizabeth? Can you define what a common property is?
I think like a clubhouse.
What that means is, is any time that there's.
Landscaping.
Right.
Landscaping, or, or a community center, or a pool, or, but.
In condominiums, it could be the roofs, it could be all of the outside maintenance of it.
But many projects are set up such that there isn't any, any property that would allow you to create, that would be the basis for you to create a traditional HOA.
So tell me about landscaping, because, I mean, if you were to have a landscaping company maintain a front yard, is that what you mean by landscaping, Elizabeth?
Well, if, well, if there were common landscaped areas that don't belong to a park or something the city's not maintaining, right, they just have their own common areas, then, right. So it's not just your traditional median or fronted landscaping. It's a common area that the city or another entity does not take responsibility for, therefore, the homeowners have the responsibility for maintaining it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yep.
So the non-CID would be, you know, like side yards that face a street? So, the, the non-CID would be, um, you know, like side yards that face a street? So, there's no, the, the house is facing a different street, but the side yard faces the street. Often, there's a setback with landscaping. But that's under our normal development pattern. That's an individual homeowner's responsibility, that landscaping. A more ideal situation would probably have the homeowners in common maintain that. Because if you leave those side yards to the homeowners, um, random things happen, right? Uh, Siri, out in your neighborhood, I saw one neighbor who picked up his fence from three feet away from the sidewalk, moved it adjacent to the sidewalk, took all that, what appears to be common landscaping, and made that the new landscaping inside his new fence, inside his side yard. Which, I think we had to make them move the fence back on the other side of the landscape. But in other cases, you've seen, we had a neighbor, I-
So, did you have the city step in that one, or was it the HOA?
There was no HOA in that neighborhood. And, uh, there were not enforceable CCNRs. And so, city staff had to say, "You can't put a fence on a sidewalk. That violates our common code."
Which we do. We, we do have the ability to, to enforce the codes, and we do so both reactively and proactively.
But if they decided to turn it into pink rock, instead of the landscaping that was everywhere else in the neighborhood, there's nothing you can do about it. Unless it was in the CCNRs that were enforceable, like in option three here, or, or one and two. Uh, but currently, you know, that, that sort of thing can happen. Someone can paint their wall orange, there's nothing, nothing we do about that.
So, I think we're all in alignment in terms of why we need this. It, it's for, you know, maintaining the property values, maintaining the appearance, um, because that makes a big difference, and also for safety and security concerns. And how we get to that resolution, if CCNRs can accomplish that purpose, I think we'll, we'll reach, uh, you know, a, a, an agreement on that one. But if not, which is why we've, go ahead.
So, at this point, what we said is, three of us are down with option one. And then, so, three of us are good with the telling any developer that comes in, they're going to have to put an HOA in place. This is the old discussion that we would do that. Of course, if they came to council, we would, could, of course, make a judgment on that. But you should know, if you're coming into Rancho, develop a big swath of land, that they're going to want an HOA. We also said that there was both, there was four council members that are down for the, uh, option three, which is CCNRs. Yeah, so, four of us want the CCNRs. So, Cyrus, or staff, how would you like to handle? Do you want to go with the one that has the most votes, or you, should we? What are we, what is our, what is our option?
Garrett, I, I think, I think staff was fairly, fairly clear that-
Enforceable CCNRs.
Yeah, the, option one, I, if we, if you want to bring back up that slide, um, I think staff just explained that only in circum, circum, certain circumstances would we be able to compel a developer to do that. And they could design their, their subdivision in a way to avoid us being able to compel them at all. So, as long as they made the homeowners responsible for all of the community properties, there is no way to compel them to say, or legally to even have one, I believe, is what I just heard. So, the question becomes, and again, my, my, what I kind of wanted to start this conversation off with is, we have an unwritten rule at the moment, which is something I don't like to do, that essentially, staff is under the impression that we have a policy that says that option three is expected of all developments. I, I've never said I've necessarily been opposed to it, but I've also never been asked to weigh in whether or not I'm opposed or supportive of it. Um, and so, I wanted to have that discussion. I don't really think one or two is on the table, if, as far as questioned us.
So, again, if, if I may try to help restate the legally where you are. I think that Mayor May, may I, go ahead. Through the mayor, if I could.
Adam, go ahead.
Sure, so, so again, um, option one, as, as we, we talked about in the staff report, um, option one is, if, if a piece of property, if a developer comes in and says, "I want to have, or, um, these common areas," then they are required to form a traditional HOA. And that's a common interest development, and they have to go through, they have to go through the state, and they have to, um, get, get state approvals for the, the common interest development and the maintenance of those commonly owned, commonly maintained facilities. If they don't, then option two, to some extent, was the result of, of us looking out for tools and o- options and ideas, as Elizabeth had talked about in a prior, prior staff report, to, um, what we could do to, to still have tools for you to do the kind of, uh, community preservation that you are interested in, even where there wasn't any common interest areas. And so, that was what, you know, led to the discussions about this more hybrid option, option two. Option three, again, is what, what a number of communities do that don't do either. They just require you to do CCNRs that would, would address particular subjects. So-
So, Adam, let me make sure. So, our, the council said that they're interested in, in option one, if it can be happened, and option three, no matter what, right, guys? Is that basically what everyone's saying? We, we always want them to have enforceable CCNRs, which will protect the value of any property that gets built years after we're gone. So, no matter what, we want an option three. But if we can't have an option one, we would, but they would have to have, like, a clubhouse or something like that, that that community would then taken care of. Is that, is that what everyone hears? Is that what everyone's okay with?
So, so we can get you, anytime there's, anytime there's common areas, we can get, we can say you want option one.
Right.
And anytime there's not common areas, we could get you option three.
Linda, what did you want to say? I'm sorry, Linda.
Um, no, just, uh, just accept that. I think three of us, um, uh, would prefer no Architectural Review Committee, or, or not, would prefer that there not be a requirement for an Architectural Review Committee.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's the point of this discussion. We're talking about the minimum standard. So, I think a couple of you are talking about, like, aspirationally, we'd love developers to come in, build nice clubhouses and extra park or whatever, um, that would be managed by an HOA. But ultimately, there's a lot of, and I, I want to be very clear about this, too. What, when, when you're saying to mandate option one, you're also creating a massive amount of liability on the part of the developer that the developer has to accept. And some developers are willing to do that. Obviously, some of us live in a neighborhood like that. Um, to mandate something along what you're talking about could severely hamper our, our desirability for developers to want to develop new communities here. Um, so, keep that in mind, that there, there is a lot more liability in the organization of an HOA against the developer in future years, um, for, for other things.
I just heard Garrett say that four of us prefer option three.
Yeah.
And, and at least three of us prefer option three without the Architectural Review Committee.
Yeah, and, and again, it's not, it's not that I'm opposed to an Architectural Review Committee. I don't want to, it doesn't need to be a minimum standard. If a developer chooses, or a, a community decides that they're going to have an Architectural Review Committee, that's, that's on them if they decide to do that. I don't think the city needs to be requiring.
And that's why I use the word mandated. It would not be mandated.
Yep. We're on the same page.
David, is that what you heard, too? Are you good with that?
Uh, yeah, I think I'm all right with that. I mean, option one is required if you have common area under state law. So, that's not really an option. Um, option, option three, I, you know, I really appreciate that fourth item there, parking of boats, recreational vehicles, and trailers. Because as you've seen in our community, trying to implement that change after the fact is extremely difficult.
Excruciating.
Yeah, and, you know, most of our new growth area, there's no room for these anyway.
I remember it.
So, it's kind of a non, a non-issue, but in, an important one. So, I'm wondering if there's anything else we need to put on that list.
Hey, I, I was wondering, so the maintenance of the front yard, right? So, like, where, does that come in under one of these? Or do you have to put a separate bullet? Because-
City property maintenance codes.
That would be a one. So, if you're, if you're collecting a fee for a service, then you can, then, then state law requires an HOA, right? So, Siri, if you're familiar with the Villas in Anatolia, which is the one neighborhood in Anatolia that, where they maintain the yards, the front yards, those homes pay a higher HOA than everybody else that lives in, in Anatolia. But like, I lived in a condo in Rosemont, and when I bought, I want to say my HOA was a hundred and ninety dollars. And by the time I moved, or sold it, I don't know, six, seven years later, the HOA was three seventy-five, just because of deferred maintenance. So-
So, can you have a CC, well, can you have it, that, uh, homeowners can do it by themselves, but it has to be maintained? And that's what's enforceable?
That's a CCNR, but, but those are maintained by the homeowner. So, when, when the responsibility falls upon a given entity, to, so, the neighborhood's going to take care of everybody's yards, then you collect a fee to pay the landscaper for that, and a management company to manage the, the landscaper.
I don't think that's what Siri is asking. Sir, I, simplest answer to your, uh, request for routine maintenance of the front yard is the inclusion of reference city property maintenance codes.
Yeah.
Because that gives everybody the right to report neighbors who do not maintain their front yard, and it gives the city the right to go out and have a chat with them about why they ought to.
Or cite them for it, yeah.
Or in, in, in these developments, whatever's in their CCNRs. So, if you have one development that said, "You have this type of tree, and this type of flower, and this much grass, and this is your edging, and this is your fence material, and you have to keep it," then if it's in those CCNRs, the city would enforce them keeping that.
Right.
But if it just says, "You have to keep your lawn mowed," and that's it, then you can tear everything else out, change everything, however, however you want it.
Yeah.
Nothing.
If there's no grass to mow, then I'm, then I don't have to do it.
Right.
And I think that, uh, David, the one way that I've seen different communities deal with that, they come up with a model CCNRs.
That's what I'm going to say.
Yeah, so, and they would basically hand that over to developers and say that this is the CCNR that we would like for you to, uh, record with your property and enforce by our code enforcement.
And I think Elizabeth's already done some of that.
Right.
Yeah, see, just make a big-
So, in the model CCNRs that we have, I mean, our property maintenance code is pretty robust. It already says you have to contain your landscaping, you have to put your garbage cans away. All of these things are in our property maintenance code. It was designed that way. The reason I'm putting it into the CCNRs and referencing them is because you can't expect a resident to go read our entire code and find the property maintenance code. So, this is meant to be put it in, in a manner that's easily digestible, referenceable. Um, and they can't say they didn't know about it, because it's right there in their CCNRs. So, I will say, a lot of this is truly about education, right? I don't believe property owners willingly want to go out there and violate our code. They do it by accident because they don't know. So, the, so the more we put in these CCNRs, and the more we remind the property owners that they have them, and the more education we can push out to them, I think that's how we're going to sustain our neighborhood.
Right.
Right, is, catch it before- I'd like to bring up one other, uh, wrinkle, not to, um, not to add too many wrinkles to this. But, um, when you have enforceable CCNRs without an HOA, there needs to be a method of, um, transmitting those enforceable CCNRs, or those CCNRs period, to subsequent owners after the original owner. Because, um, what I'm experiencing now, when you have, uh, an HOA, whether it's a, well, a, a non-CID HOA, when you have an HOA, then, um, in your, um, in your closing statement, somebody pays a fee, an exorbitant fee, actually, um, so that the management company, the HOA's management company can then record the name and address of the new owner, send them all of the CCNRs, uh, get information about, about that person, and add it to their files. Uh, otherwise, as in Stone Creek, subsequent owners never get the original CCNRs and have no clue that anybody ever thought, um, put them together.
It should be with the property sale transfer, right? When they sign the title.
But title companies don't do that. So, I, 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 probably maybe, maybe Adam and Elizabeth can come up with a solution for that.
It's, it's something to talk about, but they are all, they're all recorded documents in your chain of title, and, and for, most title officers, as part of your title insurance policy, should be reviewing those with, with purchasers and saying, "Here's the big thing that's on your title."
Yeah.
Okay, my original intent of including the ARC was the dissemination of that information.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, there were three people talking at once.
It, it just, it doesn't, it's a wonderful idea, Adam, but title companies don't do that, and it doesn't happen. And nobody but you and me read the, the, uh, titles, read the title anyway.
In the stack of a hundred signed documents, yeah. There's one.
Right.
All right, so, uh, Mr. Mayor, got direction at this point? And Cyrus, do you have what you need to be able to come back to it?
Yes, I do, Mr. Mayor. I, I think we do, but the, the, I think we have a representative from the BIA who would like to make a comment.
Okay.
So, we have Cornelius Burke. Cornelius, I've unmuted you, and you'll have three minutes.
Thank you so much, um, Mayor, and members of the city council. This is Cornelius Burke, uh, legislative director with the North State BIA. Just want to echo some of the comments that we had here. Um, we're strongly opposed to option one and two. Um, if the council moves forward, we recommend option three without the ARC. Um, thank you for the conversation tonight. I want to make sure we're a good partner, um, and just want to thank Elizabeth and the whole entire city staff, working with the BIA and the home building industry to make sure we have a great quality community in Rancho Cordova. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Excellent, thank you. All right, staff, you have your direction?
Mr. Mayor, are-
Regurgitate, or did you hear everything correctly?
I think we have councilmember Sunday who would like to say something.
There is, there is still this question of what exactly is that standard CCNR package? Um, because we could all probably come up with a few things we'd wish were on the list. I'm not sure if any of us know what's on that list. But, for example, the issue I brought up before of that side yard, street frontage, you know, how should that be maintained? Should we maintain in original condition? That could be a CCNR we require everywhere. Probably have a big visual impact on neighborhoods. Should, should we deal with sidewalk, uh, or, I'm sorry, driveway widening? Um, or, or plants in the front yard? You have to maintain the trees that are there. You know, those sorts of questions in CCNRs.
So, David, you have a really good point, and, um, um, Elizabeth, we should have a copy of model CCNRs for us to, to look at. Um, David, my only caveat, while I might, might not be the person who would rip out their grass and trees in order to plant a drought-tolerant lawn, um, we have a significant number of people who have done that. So, when you start talking about maintaining things in their original condition, it may, we might actually be setting people up to run afoul of the current philosophies that the state of California.
Right, and that's where an HOA could actually adapt over time. And our CCNRs are going to be kind of a fixed thing, not as a challenge.
Well, we could change them.
Well, that's, well, maybe, I'm not sure.
Why wouldn't we amend CCNRs the same way we do development standards? Adam?
So, like, you've talked about their, their model documents. You wouldn't, uh, you could certainly amend CCNRs like you do development standards. And the reason you don't amend development standards very often is because the business community loves certainty and predictability above all else.
I don't think we can modify existing CCNRs, like-
No, 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 no.
I don't think-
No, no, you can't.
Yeah.
Ball, they would evolve as time goes on.
You, you, oh, yeah, future neighborhood.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID, followed by pound.
Welcome to Zoom. Enter your meeting ID followed by pound. Enter your participant ID followed by pound. Otherwise, you have joined the meeting as an attendee and will be muted throughout the meeting.
Do this. They like, like, for Linda's sake, every developer has to put palm trees in. Right? I just wanted to, want to make her look like that at the, the camera. Like, if there are those specific things, like that's my, that was my point about this conversation is that.
Only in Florida.
It, it, and, and again, it gets back to, to the Crestley development where it's like, we were doing design review and we had this conversation about CCNRs when they had their DA, right? So in their case, they're coming there saying, approve the look of my houses. And we're saying, we want this fundamental function and system of, of, of CCNRs when they already had their DA and didn't have it in it. So if there's something that has to be in a DA and we're, and, and the expectations for Elizabeth's staff is these things at a minimum have to happen in new developments if you want a DA. In those cases, write it down. So, you know, David, if, if that's what it is, it's side yard maintenance, it's certain, I mean setbacks, I guess we do, but, um, if there's trees like Linda, you know, put on the list. We do not allow palm trees for new development. Fine. I, I'm not opposed to it. But write it down so that anybody shopping for land over here understands this is what you're getting yourself into. What Adam just said, this is your predictable playing field of what it costs. And to be frank, to Garrett and, and to Siri, and again, I'm not saying I'm necessarily opposed to a developer coming in and saying, I want an HOA, but to, to force it, I'll be honest with you, there's a handful of developers say, I'll just go build somewhere else. I have millions of dollars and I can do that here and I can do that somewhere else. And if that's what it is, you know, the likelihood of an HOA suing the, the, the developer is much higher than when there's not an HOA. It's just, it's just the, the nature of the beast for a whole bunch of reasons.
Well, thank you, council. Uh, if I may, uh.
Summarize, we should summarize for sure.
Yeah. Messa mayor, if I may summarize, I think what I understood, that if there isn't a common interest area, it's, it's a given. There's no option. By state law, we have to have the HOA. But otherwise, we will have enforceable CCNRs with the, uh, exception of the architectural review committee on that list, unless a developer wished or intended to do so. Uh, so, and then I think.
That's exactly what you got everyone agreed to. Yep.
Right. And lastly, lastly, I think there was also an interest in working in model CCNRs that is robust and has as many, uh, features as possible. So, so it's, it's predictable and it's, uh, uh, known beforehand before, for its, and it's not a last minute decision.
Yeah, I don't, yeah, I don't anticipate any changes to what's.
We want to have it be very specific so a developer can make it easy in here. So we want palm trees, lava rock are the only things allowed in the city of Rancho. And as much red clay that we can get. Lava rock, red clay and palm trees. This city's going to be on fire. I'm going to tell you right now.
Uh, I'm, I'm pink flamingos, right?
Oh, the pink flamingos have to.
I do have to close by saying this, even though it wasn't in all of their conditions of approval, we've had quite a few developers willingly record enforceable CCNRs, right, on their projects. And so I really appreciate their willingness to do that. Even Crestley, who didn't have it in their, in their, uh, conditions of approval, they did it anyways. Woodside started it, then Lenar did it, Premier Homes did it, Watt Communities did it, Crestley did it. But I just need to give a shout out for those people who didn't.
Great. And so that's something we have now. And that and pink flamingos and palm trees.
They did it for us. Good.
Thank you. All right. Moving on.
So council, the next time you will see this, you will see this, it will come for a formal vote at some point.
Thank you, Cyrus. All right. Uh, do we have any requests for future agenda items? Siri, this is where you pipe up, tell your thing that you're thinking of.
Um, so I was having a, I was wondering, you know, I'm in the city of Rancho Cordova, we have really low vaccination centers. And if we could put like a focus group on how we can get more vaccination centers here in the city of Rancho Cordova. Um, you know, get to next steps, two by twos from the city council or, you know, we can want to.
Or a vaccination center in Rancho Cordova. We don't have any.
Yep.
I know that California North State is working on, on doing a, uh, vaccination site here. Uh, I'm not certain. Hmm?
They did it in Elk Grove.
Yes. And, and I, um, mess, council member Sunday, I've been in conversations with Dr. Chine. He's interested in your setting one up, uh, at the campus here, the local campus in Rancho Cordova. So that's clearly one center. Of Kaiser also is offering vaccinations at the, uh, location Rancho Cordova for their patients. Uh, and I believe, uh, council member Burch, didn't you say, SafeFe is also offering that?
When do you think we'll have those in place to where we can actually give, help out with our citizens? When do you think those will happen? Cyrus?
Uh, the discussions I've had, we, we think, uh, when the vaccines become, uh, generally available to the public, uh, that the CNU, the California North State University one, will be operational. That's, that's our goal. That's a timeline we're working on. But the other facilities with Kaiser and SafeFe and CBS, they're available now.
I, I don't think they're in CBS in Rancho Cordova.
No.
And compared to our peer cities, we are like really, really low. I, I thought none, but then obviously there's one or two. We, compared even for some, everybody is, you know, they're getting late vaccines. They, we need to increase that amount in Rancho. And let us know what needs to be done, Cyrus, in order to do that.
So Cyrus, there's, 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 uh, can we put a subcommittee or group together? Like maybe Siri and David are most interested, can work with you to see what we can do to generate people come in and trying to get that vaccine going?
Can we put a?
Cyrus?
I'm, I'm fine. If, uh, council member, uh, fully party and Sunday are willing to work with me on that, I would appreciate it. I'm not sure how or who we can influence, uh, to make that happen. I think that's, uh, in most cases, the healthcare providers are doing that for their members. And, and the county health office is working through CBS and SafeFe. Okay.
So, so I, I guess I'm hearing just as this relates to a potential future council item, I'm hearing the city manager say he will work with, work, work with two council members to see if there is an opportunity for a future report on the subject to the full council.
That would be great. Yeah.
I'm fine with that.
May, may I raise one other issue?
You may.
The, thank you, mayor. The, the council at the end of last year, uh, considered and gave us a tentative, uh, direction that's now in place that for campaign limits, you, you do not wish to have any on contribution limits. And you asked us to potentially raise the, that subject again with you. You, you really have three choices. You could say, no, we don't want to schedule an item and your, your prior direction would stand. And, or you could say you want us to bring back an item to discuss your options there at a regular council meeting. Or you could do the same for us to bring it back at a workshop. Those are essentially your three choices. But if you, if you, if you don't give us direction to come back, I think we would, uh, the existing decision would stand. And there would be no action to adjust that for this current cycle.
Donald, did you want to bring that back? This, uh, this neck or, or bring it back? Or we, are we guys going to push?
What's the question?
He wanted to know if you, he wanted us to bring back campaign limits or we wanted to not deal with that until next cycle?
I, I mean, I, I, I think we made a commitment that we would adopt something. Um, just that we weren't going to have the state tell us what that was, but I, I think it's, it's appropriate to have the conversation. We can leave it the way it is, I guess. That's, I'm, I'm not necessarily opposed to it, but, um, you know, that, in, in my mind, camp, campaign limits are just something that, that protects incumbents, frankly. Um, if you make it harder to get enough resources together to, to have a, a robust campaign, uh, it just makes it easier for people to keep getting reelected. So I, yeah.
We, we, we shouldn't, we shouldn't express our views on it tonight. It was just sort of a, a thumbs up or a thumbs down.
Yeah, I'm, I'm repeating what I said before. So yeah, I'd be, I'd, I'd want it on an agenda in the not too distant future. I don't, I don't think it's.
Bring it back, Adam. You heard, there's two of us. Is there a third that we can bring it back?
Okay, guess we'll leave it the way it is.
I'm getting none, so I think it will stay the way it is.
Yes.
Because you heard. The limit.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. All right. Um, that's it?
We may have.
Linda, do you have anyone you want to adjourn the meeting in? Name of? Oh, David does.
We, we may have, uh, a need for a future agenda item, um, with regard to the HCP, the Habitat Conservation Plan. Um, I don't know how many projects we have sort of beleaguered with HCP fees that are unknown and undetermined. But, um, that seems like an untenable situation to me that needs resolution. I don't know if it requires council action.
David, I don't think that's accurate.
I think we've got projects that have been sitting for a year, not knowing what their fees are.
What?
I, I don't think that's accurate. We've, um, I mean, the whole project, the whole, the whole, um, um, effort has really only been, um, uh, organized for about four months now. And, uh, and they now have a certain amount of mitigation banks. And, um, the vast majority of, um, projects in Rancho Cordova are going through the, uh, through their, their process.
I think it's the small projects that no one intended to get caught up in this that are, that are, are the ones I'm referring to.
You're talking about the one and a half acres that somebody we both know is trying to get resolved down on Sunrise.
Yeah, that's one of them. I think there's more than one though.
So, so what may have happened in that is the fact that the HCP may not have been written for something that's small. But neither the consultant nor I think that's the case. So, um, that's an issue that needs to come before the HCP if the document needs to be revised again.
Yeah, I'm just saying it's a live issue. We might need to, as a, we'll take it up. I don't know if, if our staff is staffing the HCP. If the HCP is fully independent, I'm not, I'm not even sure what ground I'm standing on here. I just know it's, uh.
Well, the HCP is fully independent. It has, it has an executive director. Um, Garrett and I are, are representatives. We are the chair and vice chair actually, and, um.
Talking to the right people, David.
Yeah. And Elizabeth is, uh, Elizabeth is our, um, is our staff representative.
So A- Adam, I, I hear that there's enough, if you want to talk about it, but I know we can't really discuss it right now. But there's three people. If we need to discuss something, we got that. All right. At this point, I'm going to go ahead and adjourn the meeting and I will see everybody, uh, in two weeks.
Thank you. Thank you.